Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. Today is January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is six oh six P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and as usual, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
States of America.
States.
To the Republic.
For which.
Invisible.
Liberty. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we will begin our meeting with a public comment. I know there's quite a bit of public comment tonight, so Kat, we will let you take it from here. Anyone who would like to raise their hand, they can come in for comment. Please note that there is a three-minute, three-minute limit per speaker in the public comment. So Penelope, welcome, and thank you for joining us this evening.
You're muted, Penelope. Here, I'll send you the link unmute.
I'm unmuted now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you for giving me a chance to say a few words. I, my name is Penelope Wright. I grew up in Southampton and in the last year or so, since I stopped working, I've had quite a bit more time to walk. And so the issue of leaves and leaf blowers has, has kind of surfaced as sort of something that I've given quite a bit of thought to, and I just wanted to read a relatively short letter that I have written to the mayor and to the board, village board, and I'll do that right now. "Thank you for instituting a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers during the summer months. We are writing to ask that you consider making this ban year-round. We are longtime village residents who feel that our enjoyment of life is undermined by the constant whine of gas leaf blowers. In addition to the loud noise, gas blowers produce environmentally damaging fumes, dust, and pollen. It is also not healthy for the workers who operate these machines for hours on end during the off-season. This is the time when many of us who live here year-round particularly enjoy walking on our village streets and increasingly frustrating exercise in zigzagging here and there to avoid noisy streets. In some cases, landscaping companies are ignoring the existing summer ban, and in many cases, they are neither ticketed nor fined. While we do understand that landscapers have a financial interest in keeping the status quo, we object to their interests being prioritized over the rights of the rest of us. Furthermore, presumably, landscaping companies have already made investments in electric leaf blowers, which should make the transition easier. Thank you for your efforts to improve the quality of life for all of the residents in Southampton Village." I wrote this letter and basically just circulated among my neighbors in the village, just friends and neighbors, and got fifty signatures, which I, which I submitted. I have no doubt that I could have gotten a lot more signatures if I had had longer or tried harder, but it does seem to be an issue that absolutely, bar none, every single person I talked to felt was an important issue. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Penelope.
Okay. Another's coming in, and Penelope's going out. Thank you, Penelope.
Thank you again.
Orson Cummings, you're in, sir. Here's a request to unmute.
Done.
And here is a request to start your video.
Okay.
And you're on.
All right, Your Honor and trustees, thanks so much for having me. And Penelope, I'd like to thank you for that eloquent letter and statement. So I'll be brief, because I think we've all heard these arguments before. But I did start working on this issue a couple of years ago and helped work to try to get the, to get the summer ban, which has been just fantastic. And I also know that in a conversation we had, my brother and I spent time meeting with Fred Thiel from here, here and there. This is the only issue that is now more popular than traffic as a problem, which is gas-powered leaf blowers. And it really does drive people crazy to a point where we just wonder if we're ever going to get peace and quiet. And I'm a writer. My brother and I work out of a studio right here on Walnut Street. And I can't tell you how many times, you know, there'll be three to six leaf blowers working in tandem right outside my door, doing nothing, really. They're, they're just blowing things around the street. So I think also the landscaping companies have pushed this so far that they're putting us all in a rather untenable position where we can't think straight and we can't enjoy our lives. The quality of life, as Penelope said, the reason we live here, for the peace and quiet, we don't want to live in a city, is really being, being put at risk. And the only other thing I'll say there is, you know, blowing in general is, as far as the environment and where we're all going. They do have electric blowers, but the idea of blowing grass clippings and carting them away, the whole thing is a really messy issue on many levels. So I think blowing in general is something that everyone should be thinking about, whether they should be doing that at all, but a compromised position for now. If we had a year-round ban, I would certainly be, be very happy, and thank you for considering it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Orson. Thank you, Ben, and thank you for your efforts with the village and leading up to this partial ban, and also thanks to your efforts. And a lot of people here on, on this call tonight, there's been a lot of movement just on Long Island in general. People actually following the initial law that was passed, so, you know, appreciate everything you've done in your support of this effort. Okay, we have David Hart, and again, you can state your name and address for the record as well.
Hi, this is David Hart. This is my husband Dale Bailey. I had submitted a letter. Both of the previous speakers have been very eloquent about some of the issues. I'd also distributed a very kind of shocking article from October that was talking about the environmental impact of, of these two-stroke engines. And one of the most striking statements in the article was that in California, those gas leaf blowers contribute more pollution than cars. And that's California. So it's, these, these are terrible for so many different reasons. One is the peace and tranquility, just as the previous speakers were, were talking about, but also the health of us and the, the workers. It's just, it's unimaginable that we would allow this to, to continue. And the other thing, point that I would like to make is I think it's important to also to enforce the regulation once it's in place. Because many times, the easiest thing for them to, to do is to use the gas blowers. And then when questioned, they'll reluctantly get the, the electric blowers, or they'll say they weren't charged, or they didn't bring them, or whatever, but I think enforcement is equally as important as the, the regulation.
Thank you very much.
Next one is coming in.
Gentlemen, have a good night. Thanks again.
Thank you. Hi, Kimberly, you're in. Request to unmute. And start your video. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Over two and a half years ago, Mayor, Mayor Warren, when you came into office, the previous administration teed you up with everything to move forward on gas leaf blower restrictions. In addition to that, we were the first to usher in an act of gas leaf blower restriction on all of Long Island. It's unclear to me why we haven't made any movement. Even our landscapers in the community who really care about this have put forward ideas and wish to compromise and make it happen. You've received hundreds of emails and letters, and you've done nothing. What legacy do we want to give our children and grandchildren that they're gasping for air a hundred years from now? Or even fifty years from now? I don't know what's taking so long, but it's been two and a half years. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Okay, somebody's coming in again. One more second. It just didn't catch. There we go. Okay, ask to unmute, please. Mackie Finerty, you're in, and here's to start your video. Did you get the link? There you go. Hi, you're on, Mackie Finerty.
Hello, I'm Mackie Finerty. I was also involved in this in, since the beginning with the others who have spoken. And I urge all the people on the board now to go back and look at those hearings. They were very extensive. And several professors who do research on this on Long Island talked about the importance of it. And one of the most horrifying things was they were discovering these diseases, and the men who wear these on their back are breaking up the bones into brittle little pieces. And as you know, often these people are uninsured. It was really very sad to hear. So I hope you go back and look at those hearings, because they were quite well done at the time. As you know, I think you all know, you don't go anywhere. I greet someone in the village and they'll say, oh, these leaf blowers, before they practically even say hello. I mean, anybody and everybody, it's not even a topic. When we initially did that, it was a big compromise, those dates. And at that time, the, all the landscapers who were testifying against it admitted that it was the right thing to do. They all admitted that. And they said, yes, the gas leaf blowers are bad, but they haven't quite perfected. Like, we don't have the perfect electric one yet. That's a terrible excuse for anything. We don't have the perfect car yet. We don't have the perfect television yet. We need to proceed with this at this time. They, at that time, which is several years ago, they said, we will cooperate, and, and in a couple of years, then that'll be the time to do it. Well, guess what? The couple of years are here now. And so the time has come, and I think we should do it. As you might know, the town is also interested in this, and I believe they have the votes about it, and they're interested in moving forward, and they're watching us. And it would be nice if we took some leadership on this. The, at the time, we knew the dates were not long enough, but there was so much pressure, and it was given into, to the landscapers. But this year, as I'm sure you've all noticed, with global warming, just look in your own yard, look in the streets. The leaves were falling down when they were putting up the Christmas trees. Our yard filled up largely in December, and they were blowing leaves all around us where none of the people were living. And, and at Christmas, we were saying, I can't believe they're blowing leaves, Christmas week. Well, this will be the end. We come back from Christmas, they're blowing leaves at New Year's. It, we, we need a year-round ban. They don't need to be doing that. And as they said, they blow them into the streets. We watch it, and they blow back on their property, back in the streets, in the truck, and on the narrow lots where, and they blow it through their bushes into our driveway, and then they come over in our driveway, and they blow them back into there, and they do that for a while. I mean, that's ridiculous. All of that is causing noise and causing pollution that's dangerous to all of us. So I hope that you will consider this, and it's, it's, the time has come, the years have passed that they asked for. And so I think, and they all own them. Initially, we had a big issue where they're saying, oh, my God, we're all going to have to buy leaf blowers. Okay, we gave them time, and when everybody was trying to buy at the same time, then there really weren't enough, and we gave them an extension. But now they all have them. They have to have them. So it's no new cost to them. If they want to upgrade like anything else that they have on their truck, they can. But enforcement has been really dismal, because the police will say, I have to see them doing it. They see the police coming, they turn it off. That has not worked at all. So we need to work on enforcement as well. But I hope the time is here. I hope you'll move forward. As you know, it's a critical time for the environment. It's what everyone's talking about. Please pay attention and do this little tiny bit that we can do for our village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackie Finerty.
Thank you, Maggie.
There are no more hands up.
Okay. We will just give it another few seconds, just to see if there's any additional hands up. If not, we appreciate everybody attending our meeting, and we'll continue to move forward. So we'll, next up, we'll do our Employee of the Month, and again, thank you to everybody who participated tonight. And we have Employee of the Month this month. That is Mark Maddox. His title is an auto mechanic for, and he works out of the central garage. Before we go into Mark, I just wanted, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I wanted to thank all of our Public Works Department employees, and in particular, our employees did an outstanding job this first snowstorm. The snow came down, it was four to six inches. They were, did an incredible job. We got a number of compliments from our residents, saying that we did an extremely impressive job. And just in the two and a half years I've been here, this was one of the best jobs that we did so far. So this will not be the last snowstorm this winter, but I wanted to thank all of our employees, in particular, those who helped with the snow cleanup. And with that said, we now have Mark Maddox, who's the Employee of the Month, and Mark is in our central garage. So he makes sure that our trucks are ready to go, that our plows are in great shape. And after all the snow is cleaned up, Mark and some of his colleagues are responsible for all of the equipment. So thanks to Mark and his team for powering, powering all of our snow cleanup efforts and getting behind our great team that does all that hard work. So thank you again to Mark, and thank you again to all of our Public Works employees. We now have two board presentations this evening. The first board presentation is the two thousand and twenty-two Environmental Priorities. We have Rob Coburn and Tom Routham, co-chairs of the Environmental Committee. And we're very excited to hear what Rob and Tom have to say tonight. So we will move forward with, including them, if I don't know if I see them in the attendee section. We'll wait for a moment.
I'm Edmonds is in. I just bring him over. I don't see Rob Coburn.
Okay, we'll keep on, we'll keep on moving then. The
You don't want to hear from Tom?
I'm not sure if Tom Edmonds.
I believe it's Tom Luthen, right?
Oh, well, he's got his hand up.
What, Tom Edmonds in? Something he's not going to be talking about.
Probably not.
Efforts, but we'll see.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you. All right. Hi, Tom.
This is Tom Edmonds. Can you hear me? I'm, I'm just an observer tonight, please. Thanks for calling on me, though. I'll, I'll, I'll hold that. I'll hold you to it next time. Thank you.
See you later. Okay.
All right, Tom, when you're ready to do the two thousand and twenty-two Environmental Priorities, we'll, we'll take you. If not, we'll, we'll see. We, we may, we may not have, we may not have Rob and Tom tonight. So we also have recognition for our newly-appointed two thousand and twenty-two Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance Officers, and also recognition for newly-appointed two thousand and twenty-two Southampton Village Fire Department Officers. Charlene, I'll let you take it from here. I don't know if who is here to present, but I'll let you take this presentation.
Well, Mayor, actually, what's going to be done this year is we're going to do something a little bit different. We are just going to name the officers as from the, as presented and as elected through the fire department and the ambulance barn, and actually, our, our village clerk Cathy is going to go to their next meeting in person and have them be able to be sworn in in person with the, with the oath book. So they felt that that was a more personable, you know, way for them to be, you know, their family, you know, they could take pictures and have it filmed. So, but we, you know, they just wanted us to acknowledge the new officers here, and they'll be sworn in at, at a later time, because a lot of them couldn't be here tonight, because they were working, et cetera. So what we have, the slate of officers, well, actually, the elected officers for the ambulance department for two thousand and twenty-two, chief again is Shane Finicaro. First Assistant Chief is Kyle McGinnis. Second Assistant Chief is Robert J. Murphy. Secretary is Daniel Berry, and Treasurer is Daniel Maloney. For the Southampton Fire Department, chief is, re-elected was Alfie Callahan. First Assistant Chief, Emmanuel Escobar, and second Assistant Chief is Paulus Walker III. Those are the officers that were elected for our fire and ambulance for two thousand and twenty-two years.
Charlene, the treasurer for the ambulance was
Donald Mahoney. Mahoney, oh, I'm sorry. Did I not read that? I'm sorry, Donald Mahoney.
Right, okay.
All right, thank you, Charlene. And again, a special thanks to our, our fire chiefs, Alfie Callahan, Manny Escobar, Paulus Walker. They've worked particularly hard during some challenging times, and the same applies for our EMS chiefs and officers. Shane, Kyle, Robert, and, and the entire team, they've really stepped up. And we, we have a resolution also recognizing some EMS members' hard work, but we cannot do it without them. We cannot have a very safe village without them. So again, on behalf of our Board of Trustees, I wanted to thank all the chiefs of our emergency services and fire departments.
And Mayor, what we'll do is village clerk Sweeney, she will send out the dates and times for the meetings in case any of the board members would like to attend those, those department meetings.
So, Mayor, may I jump in?
Please.
So, um, there, is there a resolution on the agenda to, to accept those those nominations?
I don't believe there is. We can add that as a walk-on, but tonight, we do have a, a resolution recognizing some of our E M Ts and making sure that we give them pay raises to, to address some of their hard work that they've been doing and to recognize their importance.
So Ken, should we wait till they're sworn in, or should we do it tonight?
You could do it, you can do it tonight, and then they have to be sworn in within thirty days.
Okay, then we will do that tonight.
And, and the swearing in is, is, is not a, it does not need to be a public session. They just need to sign the oath of office.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And there is some information that we can also add to our village website from the Environmental Committee and Clean Water Task Force. I will let Rob and Tom come in maybe at our work session and address it. But in the, the letter that they addressed to us, there's just a number of highlights that they wanted to add. So a few of their priorities include the Village Wastewater and Sewer District Map and Plan, the Old Town Pond Green Infrastructure Bio-Swell Project, the Old Town Pond Constructed Treatment Wetland Project, the Old Town Pond Dredging Project, Primary Active Barrier along the north end of Lake Agawam, the Gin Lane Stormwater Drainage Improvements, the Newton Street and Linden Lane Bio-Swell Projects cost with, we have some matching grants. We have West Main Street Parking Lot Green Infrastructure Bio-Well Projects and the Algae Harvester on their top priorities list, but we're looking forward to hearing from them. So we'll let them come in and, and present that, but that's some of the, the highlights that I know they would like to speak about, and wanted to thank both of them as well. So we now will move to the communications, to the board section of our meeting. We did hear from Penelope Wright. Thank you, Penelope. We also heard from David Hart. There's a correspondence from David Kershey, and then also a correspondence from Sheila Pfeifer regarding the New York State Stretch Code. Charlene, if you don't mind, just quickly summarizing those, that would be a big, big help as well.
Sure. Email from Mr. Dische. Trying to find it here in my file. I don't seem to have that here. Hold on one second.
I can take the, the communication from, from Sheila. Sheila's done an outstanding job. She also, and we'll get to this later, is leading the charge for the Carbon Drawdown, East End Drawdown Conference at the Art Center coming up. But the Southampton Town and East Hampton Town did pass their New York State Stretch Code. So that is something that we should follow suit, and just quickly tell this for the village of Southampton. And again, I wanted to thank her for her, all of her efforts. Charlene, we can continue to, to move on if, and you can let us know about that communication when you have it. So we'll, we'll move on to our suggested resolutions portion of the meeting. And Charlene, this is, this is you, so I'll let you start with, with number one. Thank you.
Resolution number one, resolve that the claims for the warrant dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, totaling one million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and sixty-two cents, warrant A twelve general fund, and ten thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents warrant H seven capital fund, and one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-two cents warrant T thirteen trust fund be approved, audited, and approved. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution number two, resolve that the reading minutes for the public sessions of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one be accepted and dispensed with, and those minutes be filed with village clerk, and actions taken at the meeting are hereby ratified and approved. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three, the Board of Trustees approves the proposal received from AECOM Technical Services Incorporated to provide environmental permitting support services related to the implementation of long-term algae removal and restoration for Lake Agawam at a total cost of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars to be paid by the trustee's special projects fund. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second?
And?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number four, resolve that the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to execute a contract renewal between the Board of Fire Commissioners of the North Sea Fire Department and the Incorporated Village of Southampton for the operation of a Motorola paging System in, in connection with firefighting and ambulance services as requested. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number five, the Board of Trustees approves the attached budget transfer, budget transfer number three eighteen, transferring funds from Parks Supplies to Parks Equipment to purchase a power washing unit for the downtown crew in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. This was recommended by our park supervisor, Steve Phillips. He had some residual money, and he wanted to purchase this, this, this equipment for cleaning the downtown sidewalks and area. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number six, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish the notice of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six P M via Zoom regarding local law one dash two zero, two thousand and twenty-two, to propose to amend the village section, code section one sixteen dash twelve, section G, height restrictions, and to add a new subsection, one sixteen dash twelve I, retaining walls of the village code. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution number seven, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish the notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six P M via Zoom regarding local law two dash two thousand and twenty-two, the proposal to amend the village code section one ten dash forty-three, request to add restriction of on-street parking on Settler's Lane. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Discussion, trustee McLaughlin.
I'm just curious, where's this, where's this coming from? Whether, is this a request from a resident, or what's, what was the whisper on this, whisper on this request?
Good question, trustee McLaughlin. We, as you know, we really try to serve our residents to the best of our ability, and, you know, we pride ourselves on having great customer service. So we receive some calls from some residents complaining. I believe you may have been included on them as well, and so this is to address some problems that some residents are having. And I know they're going to be very happy to have this public hearing and to quickly amend our code to, to suit them. So thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eight, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, February tenth, at six P M via Zoom regarding local law to be held on Thursday, February 10th at 6:00 PM via Zoom regarding local law 3-2022. The proposal to amend the village code section A119-2 fees, update building department fees. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, resolution number nine, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the extension of the village outdoor dining until further notice. Notes store slash restaurant owners must ensure sidewalks and roadways are clear of their equipment during the inclement weather for the village highway personnel to safely operate snow removal equipment. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution number 10, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the sale of tax liens on all unpaid property taxes for the fiscal year 2021-2022 to be held at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 in the boardroom of Village Hall at 23 Main Street, Southampton, New York. Notice to this effect will be published in the Southampton Press. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolve that the Board of Trustees appoints Robert, Rovit Morales to the position of Secretary to the Planning Board slash Assistant to the Building Inspector in the Building Department at a salary of $52,000 effective January 28th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Discuss.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Who, who is this person replacing? Is this replacing Jackie or replacing, who is this person, who is this person replacing?
Well, Jackie has, this is actually replacing Jackie's position in the Building Department.
Okay.
Jackie's staying on in the, in the interim for, as, as a hybrid, you know, part-time person.
I do see that. That's why I was curious as to what, you know, is it, is it a dual role or is this the same role or what the, what the process was?
This is the same, as Jackie was.
Okay.
Jackie.
Charlene, wouldn't it be the case that Diane is, is not working full-time in the Building Department anymore?
Diane's only one day a week.
Right. Diane used to be full-time and now she's only one day. So this, so this woman is picking up the slack. We've got more applications and less people. So, so she's kind of going to plug that gap.
And everyone is kind of limping along up in the Building Department because of, you know, staff shortages and, you know, various COVID issues we've had up there. So.
Is Diane continuing the one-day week or she?
For now, she's going to stay on, for now she's staying on one day a week.
Okay. At the same rate.
Yes.
Okay.
So do, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 12, the Board of Trustees reappoints Jacqueline Allen to the position of Office Assistant as approved by Civil Service in the Building Department at a salary of $59,600 effective January 14th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 13, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the following change to the road opening permit fees which were implemented in 2005 as follows. The current fee is $100 per opening fee and $1 per linear foot. The new proposed fee would be $250 per opening and $1.25 per linear foot. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to, can I just say one thing? I'd just like to add, I'd like to thank Gary Gilleski for bringing this to my attention. As these fees, as you, as was stated by Charlene, they were implemented in 2005 and we were way behind what the other municipalities charged for the opening, the road openings and, and the cuts in the roads that are made by the utility companies. So I'd just like to thank Gary for bringing this to our attention.
And may I say, Charlene, I think it was 150, not 100, for those people who don't have an agenda in front of them, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution number 14, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the proposal of services of Richard Buxton, accountant, at a rate of $100 per hour to complete all fiscal year-to-date justice court bank reconciliations and to provide training to the village justice court staff of bank reconciliation procedures. Funds utilized from the Justice Court contractual account, A-1110.4. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? All in favor?
A quick discussion. I just want to know the duration of this and there's also to be working with the justice court with the duration of this.
Um, the duration is for him to get caught up, for the bank reconciliations to be caught up and to train the staff that's there because the, when the former accountant left the justice court, I don't know if you're aware, has, they're not really, they're, they're, the justices are signatories on their own accounts. They're not village, the village bank accounts. So they're required to do their own bank reconciliations there. So our former accountant, Eileen Tuohy, had left and those bank reconciliations that were performed here in the village were assumed by our in-house accountant Julie. But the justice court has their own bank accounts there and need to have those reconciled onsite there. So this person's going to get them caught up and have them be trained so that they will be able to do them monthly on a timely basis in-house.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, resolution number 15, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the payment of shift differential for part-time EMT paramedic employees working evening and weekend shifts as follows. Hours applicable Friday evening at 6:00 PM and ending Monday at 6:00 AM. An additional $3 per hour will be paid. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 16, resolve the Board of Trustees approves Hope for Depression Research Foundation to hold its annual HDRF Race for Hope 5K on Sunday, August 7th, 2022 from 4:30 AM to 3:00 PM to start and finish at Agawam Park. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 17, the Board of Trustees approve the Helen, Ellen Hermison Foundation to hold its 27th Annual Ellen's Run on Sunday, August 21st, 2022 from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM to start and finish at Agawam Park. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 18, the Board of Trustees appoints Alex, Alex Wallach to the position of Senior Planner in the Building Department at a salary of $115,000 effective January 24th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Discussion. Discussion.
Discussion. Trustee McLaughlin.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, with the public now, I, I've gotten a lot of calls from people and people have something about the building department being closed and obviously that's partly due to COVID. But also the building department has been put, is, is behind several months with the CFOs and with the departure of Chris Talbot kind of puts behind. So I, I, I am for this because hopefully this will streamline processes between the, the boards and the, and the department heads of the building inspectors. However, this will not automatically fix the problem overnight, but I'm hopefully, again, it will streamline process and for now, hopefully, you know, it's, it's going to be a fix, but we can, let's hopefully, once we're organized, we can hopefully readdress how we can better manage that department because obviously it's going through a lot with, with COVID and so forth and again, with the backlog of, of the application. So I'm hopeful that this will do the right thing and have us all have a better working department. So this is not a reflection on any leadership. It's just unfortunately the luck of the draw. So I wish Alex well and, and so I have to say.
Roy, would?
Thank.
I know you've been.
I'd like to.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to speak a bit as liaison to the Building Department. I've, I've, I've seen the almost the perfect storm of events that's hampered that department's ability to, to operate as efficiently and effectively and it's as rapidly as, as one might wish. Chris's Talbot's quick departure, our tin hose, so I have to fill his shoes. We were down a, a, a junior inspector. Those have been hired. We lost people due to COVID, Jackie Allen, Diane left. So we, we were shortage in our clerical help as well. And, and trustee McLaughlin is right. There's, there's been a delay in issuing CFOs and in, in some of the timeliness of the work that, that has been done and we are well aware of this. I happened to have a meeting with all the board chairman just the other day in which I heard their concerns about the timeliness of the information they were getting and the, and the accuracy, not the accuracy, the completeness of the information they were getting and again, had to apologize. And I know that Tin is doing doing the best as he can with, with the shortage of staff and hopefully this evening with the hiring of the secretary, Jackie coming back. Alex Wallach's hiring, we, we brought in considerable reinforcements and we'll be meeting with, with Tin in that department going forward to make sure that the structural changes are taking place to provide efficient and effective service to our village residents. As far as Mr. Wallach goes, he represents in, in his skills, a candidate who has a very good cross-section of education. He has a master's in urban planning. Sima Kumlaadi graduated environmental design. He has worked in Smithtown, Forest Hills, Babylon. He's served on his community's planning boards. He has served on his community's zoning boards. So he's well familiar with how boards work and I fully expect that as part of his work there will be much greater cohesion and between our, our land use boards. We're happy that he he's come to join us. He was interviewed by both Bill Mangere, former trustee and myself, the mayor, village administrator, Cagle Betts, and made an impressive presentation. And I'm confident that going forward, he will improve the effectiveness and also give us tremendous professional resources in ensuring that our planning and land and use boards operation operates more effectively going forward.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson.
Hi.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Charlene and Roy. I know all the time and effort that you put into this in making all of this happen. And I, I do believe and that these are the, all the right steps have been taken and that people are put in the right places now and, and they'll get over that hump and they'll be operating the way it should be. And, and thank you both.
And, you know, it's important to understand that even with.
Thank you.
Even with.
And I would just add that, you know, this is a continued effort to improve our village. We're very excited about this hire. And we're also excited about the fact that we've really revamped our building department. We have a new senior building inspector who's done outstanding job. Turns out we're actually, you know, well ahead of, of other building departments. I know there's a big backlog in the town as well. Thanks to Tin's efforts and Roy as a liaison to the building department, we brought on two new additional building inspectors who are, are getting trained and shortly ready to inspect. Jackie Allen's leadership has been tremendous and we're very happy that she's going to continue her service with the village. I wanted to thank Derek Highsmith for his service as well and Rovit or Ruby is a local person, extremely smart. She's going to be joining us to help with some administrative work. And I think she's going to be an excellent addition to make sure things are flowing smoothly. And then Alex is, is going to be an outstanding addition. We don't have a planning department. The town, of course, has quite a large one. So I think it'll be a great liaison between the building inspector, the applicant, the attorneys and builders. And so I'm very optimistic about the future of our building department and how it's shaping up to be. And Charlene, I'll apologize to you. I was told that I actually cut you off, but I don't have any volume on my computer, so I didn't hear it. But that's, that's what I've been told. But so.
That's fine, Mayor. I was just, actually, you, you just said what I was going to say. I was going to say that other municipalities who are fully staffed still have a backlog because of the boom in the housing industry and the construction industry that's been going on on the East End. So, you know, unfortunately, they've been, you know, keeping up as best they could with, you know, most of the time operating with 50% staff. So, but, but actually you eloquently said it better than I did. So. All right. So I, I guess on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, resolution number 19 is going to be tabled. I'm just going to read it. It was resolution number 19, the Board of Trustees appoints Robert Hand to the position of Building Maintenance Crew Leader in the Building Maintenance Department at a salary of $115,000. Mr. Hand is having, we have a little bit of an issue with the title and with the union. He had come in this afternoon. This is the vacancy that was vacated when John Claus officially retired in December. Mr. Hand has been the second-in-command in the Building Maintenance Department for many years, decades. And he was willing to step up into that role. However, we're just working out some of the details and he asked, it came and asked me this afternoon if we might be able to just push it to the next meeting so we can work out all the details of how his exit from the union or how he's going to remain in the union, how that's going to work and what the title is actually going to be. So we've worked out a few details, but we will be tabling this. So I would be asking for a motion to table this to the next meeting.
I'll make the motion to table.
Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, resolution number 20, resolve the Board of Trustees approves and authorizes the village attorney to prepare an easement for an access ramp at the commercial property located at 69 Job's Lane. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Trustee.
I, I, I'm disclosing that a company that I'm the sole partner of is the owner of the property at 69 Job's Lane. So I am recusing myself from, from this resolution's discussion and vote.
And just as far as the request for the easement, trustee, Mr. Roy Stevenson approached the, the, the building department with his architect to change the entrance of the front of his store to make it more accessible. Right now, there's a step and many people have a hard time navigating the step, even though there's a handicap exit entrance in the, in the rear of the building, takes some time for people to move around to get to, to access. So this would basically be a bit of a design ramp, a very, you know, slow sloping, low-sloping ramp, which would require removal of a few of the bricks on the other side of the walkway. It doesn't impede in the village sidewalk, walkway at all, but it does, you know, have to, the, the way the slope comes down on the entrance would require an easement because it is partially located in a small part of village property. So I think attorney Ken Gray has had discussion with the attorney and they were working out the actual easements with the measurements and needs and bounds, et cetera. So Ken, did you have anything to add to that? I think Ken's computer is maybe frozen. He's had some internet problems.
Think that's, that's all right.
He just unmuted.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that, not a problem.
So, um, on the motion, um, do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Then we have mayoral appointments. Number one, resolve the board of trustees accepts the resignation of Stephen Pfeiffer as member of the board of ethics committee effective December 7th, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We do have a supplemental resolution and I would ask for a motion to add the supplemental resolution.
Charlene, before I make the motion, we could actually table the, the first resolution and just make, I'll make a motion to add the, the second resolution regarding the public hearing.
Okay, so I also have the two resolutions that would be recognizing the election for the ambulance and the fire as well. So there's actually going to be, there's a total of four on supplemental as, as it's written.
That's right. And then, and then we also have the, the supplemental for climate awareness week.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I'll make the motion for those resolutions.
Okay, um, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution, so supplemental resolution number one, resolve the board of trustees of the incorporated village of Southampton, authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, which would be a special meeting at 5:00 PM via Zoom regarding local law four dash 2022, the proposal to amend chapter 116 of the village code re special exemption uses. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Discussion, discussion. Why is this requiring a special meeting? Could you say, you said specially? I'm just curious, that's why we're, why, is, is a regular meeting or is it a special meeting? I was, I'm a bit confused.
Well, the mayor, did you want to take that?
It's fine, we're just going to add an additional meeting or a busy board. We have a lot of work to do and we could just take advantage of the fact that we're all willing to do a little extra work. We'll add a special meeting. We only had one in December, so it definitely doesn't hurt us to have an additional meeting. It will allow us to have a little more time to focus on this public hearing.
And we, we do have a very robust meeting on the 10th as well. So we're trying to streamline it down a little bit, the timeline.
Ken, you're welcome to comment, but there's no limit on how many meetings we could have. It's, you know, always, always good when we're hard at work, but I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add as far as meetings and noticing.
No, you can, you, as long as we have enough time to notice the public hearing, you can certainly have a special meeting, not a problem.
It's a special, it's a special hearing, is it, we find zoning and what, what, what kind of special hearing are we, are we referring to? This for the public at, at occasion?
Uh, I believe the one topic that will be on this agenda has to do with the, uh, uh, food, a food pantry, special exception use.
I thought that was settled.
I, I, I'm not sure what you mean by settled.
I thought that was resolved.
Again, I don't know what you mean by resolve.
We repealed, we repealed the local law at a, at a meeting, uh, a, a few months ago.
I'm aware, but I thought that was, it was still an issue that was going to be, that was a thing that was in, in, in the courts and secrets and forth.
There's no, it's not, we, we have a, we have a, we have a, we, we, we contract, we contracted with Nelson Pope and Voorhees and Kathy Eisman did a, a, a full secret environmental impact assessment and that was circulated to the board today.
Okay, okay, so secret was done.
Yeah, and that's, that, that's going to be the, the nature of, that's part and parcel of the public hearing. So it was circulated to the board today.
Okay, I did see, I, thank you.
We had, again, we, we did a secret review and we wanted to thank Nelson Pope and Voorhees for working on that. And also thank the deputy mayor for her work, speaking with, with Molly Bishop over at Heart of the Hamptons. So, uh, thank you to, to all.
So on the, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, resolution, supplemental resolution number two, resolved that the board of trustees recognizes the election results of the officers for 2022 for the Southampton Village Fire Department as follows. Fire chief Alfred J. Callahan III, first assistant chief Emmanuel Escobar, second assistant chief Paulus Walker III. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution number three, resolved that the board of trustees recognizes the election results of, for 2022, for the election of officers for the Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Those officers are as follows, chief Shane Finicaro, first assistant chief Kyle McGinnis, second assistant chief Robert J. Murphy, secretary Daniel Berry, treasurer Donald Mahoney. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now the resolution for stretch, I do not, oh, here it is. Okay, this is rather a long one. Okay, so supplemental resolution number four, whereas the village of Southampton is a leader in sustainability efforts for the east end of Long Island, passing various legislative acts to improve health and public safety of the community through the preservation and protection of natural environment. And whereas in continuing with the village's commitment, the board of the village of Southampton adopted May, on May 25th, 2021, a declaration of a climate emergency pledging the village to make climate mitigation and the elimination of greenhouse gas emissions, a guiding principle and objective of all municipal operations, all policy and purchasing decisions, all planning and zoning decisions, all aspects of town business and a significant factor in the new master plan being developed. And whereas this declaration resolved that the, the village engage with the resources afforded by various New York state programs in order to meet these energy goals. And whereas this declaration recommended that the village board appoint a climate action committee to guide the village and the, and the community in implementation towards the goal of meeting 100% of annual economy-wide engine, energy consumption with renewable energy sources by the year 2030, thus vastly reducing the village's greenhouse gas emissions and accelerating adaptation and resilience strategy. And whereas this climate action committee has taken up its mission and one of its first orders of business brought by the New York State Research and Development Organization, NYSERTA, New York State, New York State Stretch Energy Code 2020 to the consideration of the Southampton Village Planning Commission. And whereas this New York State Stretch Code is readily adaptable, written in language familiar to building departments coordinated with the New York State Code, cost-effective and designed to improve energy efficiency with new builds by 10%. Whereas this stretch energy code has been duly considered and discussed by building department officials for the, by, and the planning commission. Now for be it resolved that the climate action committee recommends that the Southampton Village Board endorse the adoption of the New York State Energy Code to the current village building code and with all, with all due haste and process.
Make the motion.
Second, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Well, that will conclude the resolution portion.
Thank you very much, Charlene. We'll move towards comments from board members. First is our deputy mayor, trustee Arista.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to congratulate Mark for the matter as being employee of the month. And it was really terrific, the cleanup after the first snowstorm of the season and the, the best cleanup I've seen in many years in the village as well. So they, he really took the helm on that. And thank you to everyone that, of, who participated from that crew. I'd also like to thank all the store owners on Main Street and Job's Lane. We had asked that all the, their outdoor pots and whatever other things that people have outside their storefronts to be removed, so they, nothing would be damaged and our, our men from DPW could clean the streets in an appropriate way. And there was, everybody cooperated, so it was terrific. Nobody had to go out there and say move the pot or, or anything was broken. So it was terrific. And I'm also happy that we extended the outdoor dining. A couple of the, the restaurants had asked me about that because right up, right, right up to the snowstorm last week, people were still sitting outside. So in light of what's still going on COVID, if people choose to sit next to a heater outside, I'm glad that the board agreed to let the, the restaurants put their tables out. But I'm just another reminder that if a snowstorm is coming, the tables have to be brought back inside. But as I said, everybody's, I've been cooperating. We're working on, we had, the mayor and I had a meeting today with Steve from Parks and DPW when we're planning, we're going over some of the open properties that the village owns to further our commitment to beautify the village. So we're working on that right currently and still we have many things planned for our downtown area also. So more news to come on that. And I'd also like to report that as of this afternoon, $71,570 has been donated towards the reconstruction of the World War One monument. I'd just like to, and thank you for everyone that's been so generous so far. And those of you that are thinking about it, or if you would think about it, I would appreciate all donations are welcome, small, large, but we need to get to that, at least the $200,000 mark so we could sign the contract with the, the company that's going to do the repair. So the sooner, so if you're thinking about it, please let's, let's do it. Let's always remember and honor our World War One veterans that had fought so bravely so many years ago. We must never forget. And with that, I'll bid everyone a, a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Arista.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you, Kat. I was just thanking trustee Arista for her work with the World War One monument. We're off to a great start. We're almost about 25, 20, 20% there, but we're, we're making some more progress. So thank you again. Next is trustee McLaughlin.
No, trustee Brown.
Actually trustee Brown will not be making comment today, but she wanted me to wish everyone a happy new year and she will see everyone at our next meeting because she has, she, she, she was, she's, she's, she's zoomed into the meeting, but she wouldn't be able to make a public comment.
Um, thank you. I just wanted, I also want to wish everyone a happy new year. Earlier this month, I attended the planning commission meeting with, the mayor was there as well. They were discussing goals for this, for this year, 2022. So it was, uh, while it was based on infrastructure, green infrastructure, trees and, and bike paths and how they can work with the master plan group to, to help, to help work with the vision we all want to see for the village. I just want to say a few things on that. Number one, when it comes to, uh, when it comes to biking, I, I do want to encourage the residents and visitors to, uh, to, 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 I, I just said, we, we should have the village emphasize local businesses. We have Pelashare, which is a seasonal opera, operating app-based forum where people can rent bikes, very similar to city bike that, however, it is only seasonal and they are renting out to regional areas. So I really actually were a winner of the, the, I, the, the small business group several years ago when the show was active. So they, so I would definitely encourage the village to encourage further partnership with them to emphasize them as, as a partner in our green technology. I, I also want to mention as well, the trees were mentioned in, in the mayor's discussion. And I believe the village has legislation that we were working on prior to me being in office, that there was a legislation brought forth by the save committee several years ago. And it was, I believe, redrafted by about two years ago, but it was not ever acted on. So I would encourage this board to look at that legislation again, maybe in tandem with the planning commission so we can get a, get the, our trees saved. Because obviously not everything can be saved because every tree's lifespan, but those that can be saved should be saved within reason. So I also want to finish by saying, the village should be very aware of what's going on on our borders with, we have the proposed Aqua Center and also the affordable housing units on 39, both of which will have an impact, good, bad, and indifferent. So we should be vigilant and as a collective group, be aware of what's going on on our borders. So with that, I want to wish everyone a happy new year and, and see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, trustee McLaughlin. I know you're a liaison to the town. Would you mind sharing us a little more details about the Aqua Center and your opinion on it?
I believe the Aqua Center is a, you know, obviously, um, I don't know much about only, but only that they are a 50123, this has been a 20-year ongoing issue with the town and the village in terms of where to put a public pool. They do have a site, the old, um, behind the Snookoast Station on McGee Street, which is fought with traffic issues, however, you know, they are still in the very beginning, very beginning stages of that. So is, is very preliminary. I don't have any opinion on it yet, but I do think we should be aware of any type of study that they would do because it does affect obviously the village and we should look into. But what is more concerning obviously is the 60 unit affordable housing. What I know is has, has much more of a community concern, concerning, it does back up into the Hillcrest community. So I do, I would encourage this board to, because I cannot act alone. We should all be aware of these things and, and, and voice our views on them. So I would encourage that support from all of you.
Excellent, thank you so much for the update. Okay, uh, next is trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody, he certainly realizes the prevalence of the Omicron variant has been very, very challenging for everybody, um, causing health issues, hospitalizations and even, and all the way down to inconveniences in terms of what we have to do in our daily lives. I was not feeling so well a few weeks ago and wasn't really sure if it was the flu or what. And I happened to see a notification that the mayor had sent out regarding provision of additional testing facilities at the, provided by the Health Rover Company at the Heart of the Hamptons, the old ambulance barn. I wouldn't have even known about that if I hadn't seen it from the mayor. Couldn't get a test anywhere else, couldn't buy a test in the store. All the other facilities were, were closed. I was able to go online, go get tested, turned out I was positive. But fortunately was able to discover that and isolate myself from my family. So they did not, uh, have to get infected by me. And since that time, several of my employees have also utilized that service. And I would just like to thank the mayor for being proactive and putting that together in so many other communities, nobody was able to get tested. And he's right on top of this issue and he was instrumental in providing and getting health. And he was instrumental in providing and getting health, the health rover to find a place to be able to do it, find staffing to be able to do it. And I thought it was a great benefit to the community and thank you, Mr. Mayor for doing that. The other thing I would just like to comment about it, everybody knows from my previous comments at, at earlier meetings, how I feel about the leaf blower issue. I thank the people who called in earlier. I think that we really, really do need to do something. I have only been on the board since June, so I'm not as aware as I should be of the previous work that was done. And I certainly will work to get myself more familiar with that. I definitely think this issue needs to be looked at. You know, in terms of adopting this resolution about New York stretch, all the, all the words that were said about being environmental leaders and being a green community, we can't just talk to talk. We need to walk the walk. Let's figure out a solution, get some forward-thinking landscape company people give us their opinion, get some citizens involved, come up with a solution so that we don't have as much annoyance from the gas and environmental damage from the gas boiler leaf bars. So happy new year to all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. I'll defer just for a moment to, to trustee Arista. I know she wanted to speak briefly about the same leaf blower issue that you had brought up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was so excited about the fundraising for the World War One monument. I, I neglected to add to my comments, a couple of things about the, the leaf blower. And yes, something has to be done and there really has been no movement on that since a couple of years ago. And I, I have a couple of suggestions. I agree with Roy. I think that we should have a public meeting that includes everyone that's involved with that, homeowners and, and residents and, and people that use these, the leaf blowers and see if we could come to some sort of compromise with it and something that works for, for, for everyone. But you know, we need to, to listen to everyone's opinion on this and feelings on it. I also think that it might be a good idea because some people do not like to comment about things publicly, but it might be a good idea to have a survey online. If everybody's in agreement, we could do something that people could write in their comments online, take a survey, answer some questions or make some suggestions. And I think that this, that would get this, get this moving. So I hope that the rest of the board's in agreement with that. We get, we can get this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Arista. So I will wrap this up with the final comments. First, I wanted to speak about climate awareness week and then I wanted to recognize a few people. I'm very happy we had the walk on resolution regarding climate awareness week. And we're excited to announce the weekend of January 21st to January 23rd. Two local environmental groups, Draw It on the East End and Carbon Crew Project, in conjunction with the Southampton Art Center, are sponsoring the Drawdown Festival, tools for regeneration, forums, fun and films. There will be three days of talks, workshops and films on actions we could all take to regenerate our earth and reverse climate devastation. The event will be virtual and feature two internationally acclaimed experts in climate change solutions. Damon Gino, Australian author and filmmaker, and Paul Hawken, author of Drawdown and his latest book, Regeneration: Ending Climate Change in One Generation. Also, if anyone wants to learn more about Drawdown, you can go online. You can look at all the various drawdown options and then drawdown East End has its own website at this festival. And we will have many other experts, both local and from around the world. And they'll contribute to positive solutions on food waste, energy, sea and soil sequestration, finance, consumption, communicating about climate and much more. Registration is free for all who'd like to attend and it's through the Southampton Art Center website. And then regarding New York Stretch Code, we are in a good situation. We're very fortunate to have neighbors that are also very active. And again, Southampton Town and East Hampton Town have actually recently passed New York Stretch Code legislation. So all we really have to do is make sure that fits our code and then adopt something extremely similar so that we're also in line with other municipalities. And then again, I wanted to recognize Rovit will be joining us. Again, I want to thank Jackie Allen for all her work in the building department as well as Derek Highsmith. And then also again, recognize our EMTs and fire department. Many, if not all, of members of EMS and fire have full-time jobs. And they do all this on their free time. So they really go above and beyond to help the community. Alfie, for example, is also a Southampton Village dispatcher. You know, we have Rob Murphy from EMS, who's doing a great job, teacher as well. So you've got many members who are serving their community in other ways in addition to EMS and fire. So we really have to recognize all of their hard work. And then Charlene, I brought up a quick discussion about Bob Hand. He has been just a longtime great employee of the village. And so be remiss if we didn't thank his, thank him for his efforts. So and then regarding Roy, you'd mentioned Health Rover. We have their setup, they're been scaled up to 120 tests per day. I wanted to thank a lot of our local EMTs, both in Southampton Village, Southampton Town, a few from Riverhead that actually stepped up. I put an advertisement and they actually are now been onboarded Health Rover, which allowed them to scale up the number of tests. This was done right during the peak of testing season. Southampton Hospital also has PCR testing. And then I've been reaching out to Sun River to see if we can get them set up. There's just going to be a lot of additional demand for testing. So we want to make sure our village is prepared for it. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.